Good evening all. I'd like to welcome you to our village council meeting of Monday, September 13th, 2021. Will the clerk please call it?
Commissioner Millich-Walter, present. Commissioner Pope?
Present.
Commissioner Reed?
Present.
Mayor Mahoney.
Here, thank you. Let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
You have in your packets a copy of the minutes from our previous meeting on August 9th. Any questions, comments, or suggestions? If not, I would see a motion to approve said minutes at this time.
Salute.
Second.
Bring your motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Pope?
Yes.
Commissioner Millich-Walter?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney.
Yes, thank you, and motion passes. Recognition, proclamations, appointments, and presentations. We have this evening Dr. Jeanine Torres, PhD, RN, dementia educator and peer consultant of the Dementia Society of America here to honor Pales Park Police Officer Ross Chibi. Welcome to the steps of the building. Ross, come on up. That's a busy day for you, man. You're the guy in the middle. So, I've known you for a long time, but there are a lot of people out there who don't know how you came to beat officer. So give us a thumbnail about how you're standing there.
Sure. Started as a police cadet, 14 years old here, then gave up Parkinson's, police officer for cold beers here. Fortunate to have a great career here so far, so hopefully that keeps going.
Fair enough. You're probably on the right track.
Thank you.
So tell us a little bit about the day. What shift were you on?
Night shift, been on the night shift for cold beers, so my favorite shift. Got a lot of good work done.
And what beat were you on?
We were in that cover beat that night.
Cover beat, so tell us a little bit about what that is.
Yeah, we're just assisting the other beat cars and grid and data ports between the zones, filling in the gaps a little bit on the night shift, so.
So what struck you about this vehicle when you first encountered it?
I first thought maybe it was an impaired driver, driving a little slowly, sort of a little bit within the lanes, hesitant at intersections and stuff like that, so stopped them, made contact, see what was going on.
Then what?
There were two elderly ladies from South Carolina that apparently had been on the road for, you know, several, several days, driving around, not quite sure apparently where they were going or coming from, so we had the paramedics come out and check them out to make sure everything was okay with them.
And did they tell you where they were headed?
The general idea was the Chicagoland area. Obviously, one of the great things about Pales Park is all the forest, but at night, people get confused and lost back there, so that's kind of where they were. Definitely could have been negative outcomes, things had gone better at night.
And their family was down south?
Their family actually is from the west coast area, but they are from the east coast, Myrtle, North Myrtle Beach, South Carolina.
Do you know anything about the follow-up?
Yeah, I know our team here with the crisis intervention officers and the social services, publicists and family members and stuff like that, got involved, they needed these, so that would pay.
Well, we can all imagine either ourselves or a loved one in that situation. I can imagine on a busy night in some other locations, certainly not Pales Park, someone might decide that they've got priorities and that car wasn't one of them, but I literally think, as a physician and a healthcare giver, you saved those people's lives. So I appreciate that. I appreciate all you and the rest of the team do for the village of Pales Park, and I'll turn this over.
Okay, well, let's continue that story. Thank you to Police Chief Joe Miller. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and join all of you. A little bit about the Dementia Society of America, where the nation's leading volunteer-driven all-dementia's awareness organization. That's what we hope to distinguish us, many, many different types of dementias. And our mission really is to enhance the quality of life of those living with dementia, their caregivers, and the community. One of the pillars here is to pay tribute to those who have special efforts, enhance the lives of those living with dementia, and especially their caregivers. So we heard about this amazing incident. Here's, here are these two women from South Carolina and amazingly traveled here to Illinois. And, and so the couple had been driving for a few days, and I understand they were fairly weak and disoriented as part of the background. So why is this such a significant story? When incidents like this are known, we call it elopement, and it's where a person with dementia leaves a safe area, typically a home or other community environment for where they live. Now, the reality is that this happens much more frequently than what most people realize. It's projected that the incidence of this type of elopement happens at about 198,000 times a year, and between 20 and 35% of those individuals are usually found dead or never found. The number of lives lost to elopement typically tragically reaches about 63,000 people a So that's why the Dementia Society of America is starting a new initiative called Operation Keep Safe. It's a national program, a new one, you'll hear more about, that includes a distribution of an ID kit, and it's free, and it helps families with individuals, loved ones with dementia at no charge, and I have some information about it for you a little bit later. So we're going to announce National Keep Safe Day on October 20th, 10/20 of each year, and this is our inaugural year. This responds to what I just learned is the 10 code, which is, which means what is your location, 10/20. So it's something that I've learned, so that's, that's sort of the significance of October 20th. So we want to be thankful for this positive outcome, given the stats, we now understand that it could certainly have been much more tragic. So we just wanted to recognize Officer Russ Chibi's act and understanding that something was wrong, and his willingness to take, to take the appropriate steps to keep these two women, could have been our grandmothers, could have been our sisters, our friends, safe, and return them home. So thank you for that. So I'm here on behalf of the Dementia Society of America to recognize and salute you for your proper and caring response. So with that, a small token of appreciation for you, a gift card, and this award.
Thank you very much.
So. Do a fist bump. Love that. All right, thank you again for this opportunity.
Well done, Ross. Thank you very much.
I just would like to add a few words. I cannot believe Ross Chibi is going to be a police officer for 12 years. Ross, I just want to say to you, I think I said something similar to Diane when she was elevated to sergeant, you don't treat this like a job, you treat it like a con. There's a big difference, and the way you approach this situation is the way you approach all situations. Our, our police department is what it is because of efforts like this, treating it as a con and not a job. And I'm very thankful, officers like you, staff we have, it's what keeps me doing this job for as many years as I have. There's just an incredible amount of pride when I hear stories like this, and smaller stories. We're hearing, you know, many, many stories like this of people just making the extra effort, and I just want to commend you. We've been around in the village about the same length of time, you know? We started as a cadet about the same time I became an elected official. I can't believe how many years have passed, it's, it's incredible, but thank you for your, for your wonderful effort and your commitment to being the best police officer that you could be.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Doctor, for coming this evening. If you were here for the presentation, feel free to leave, although we have really excited to talk about it.
I can see that. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. You'll be on tonight's setup.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I also, item B is to proclaim September 17th through 23rd, Constitutionally, in celebration of the Constitution, we urge residents to reflect on the privilege of being an American citizen with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. You can find the Constitution on the internet, a little pocket copy. I look at it often, especially during Constitution Week and other days of celebration. Item C is to proclaim the month of September 2021, ovarian cancer awareness month. Teal is the awareness ribbon color for ovarian cancer, and ribbons will be tied on lampposts and trees throughout the village. The goal is to educate the community, increase awareness about the symptoms of ovarian cancer. The National Ovarian Cancer Coalition provides information to assist newly diagnosed patients to give hope to survivors and support caregivers. Their commitment also extends to the advancement of ovarian cancer research. Consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are a team or an board, the protection of the board commissioners, and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion necessary, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered To approve the Pales Professional Fire, Fire Department's Raffle License and Raffle Manager bond waiver request for raffle will be held on Monday, November 1st, 2021, at the Pales Park Firehouse. Item B, ratify payment invoices on the warrant list dated August 23rd, 2021, in the amount of $102,834.87. Item C, to approve payment invoices on the warrant list dated September 13th, 2021, in the amount of $167,266.31. And item D, to approve the supplement on the warrant list dated September 13th, 2021, in the name of tax payroll and recurring wire transfers in the amount of $533,579.23. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Salute.
Second.
Bring your motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Pope?
Yes.
Commissioner Millich-Walter?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Mahoney.
Yes, and motion carries. Anyone with some local business can be brought before the council at this time. Now, I will move to information updates Public Works and Streets and Recreation Report, Commissioner Millich-Walter.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. You have a few items on the agenda tonight. I will try to make them as quick as possible. The first one is regarding the ordinance that increases the water rate. City of Chicago raised their rate on June 1st, 2021, so the new rate will be six cents per thousand gallons of water, higher than the current rate. So that means the village will increase their rate six cents to $12.82 per thousand gallons of water, and the water rates are covered by the Village Code under section 1046.32. Does anybody have any questions before we make a motion? I'd like to make a motion to approve adopting ordinance 2021-27 entitled, An Ordinance Amending Part 10 Title 4, Chapter 1046, Section 1046.32 of the Pales Park Village Code in regard to water rates.
Second. Any questions? Do you, do we want to just briefly talk about, I get folks occasionally saying, why is Pales Park water so expensive? I had a conversation a few years ago with a man who said, you know, my, my water bill in Miami condo is so much cheaper. And I stopped for a second and I explained, you know that what you're paying for in your water rate is the infrastructure, it's not just the water, which we get from Chicago through O'Blon, it's the infrastructure, it's all the pipes in the ground that we have to build and maintain, that's what's in your water rate. And as you can imagine, in a community that is not very dense, that the pipe per resident is probably among the highest in the region. So I just wanted to give that a little color before, so we have a motion. Well, let me add two other things. Sure, absolutely. Two other things, or three other things that I also point out to people. First of all, we bill on a bimonthly rate, so you pay six bills a year, so your bill is for the last two months, not the last month. Second of all, refuse is always, also in the bill. And third of all, there's service on the bond that paid to put the pipes in the ground, so there's more than just 1,000 gallons or 3,000 gallons of water. That's why we have minimum bills as well. You may not use the minimum amount of water that we charge for, but it covers the cost of delivering it and all the infrastructure there. So yeah, there's a lot that goes into a water bill, and we're raising it exactly how much we've been asked to, that the city of Chicago is now charging us through a bond to receive that water. So it's not like we raise it $100. Right, and understand too, the water fund is what's known as a proprietary fund. The fund, we do water rate studies periodically, and the purpose of those water rate studies is for engineers to tell us that we are charging the cost that recorders of the village to provide the service. So it's not like the village is, you know, this is a moneymaker for us, we're trying to recover the cost involved in getting the water to your homes and paying for the water.
Absolutely, and everything you all said is right, and the pass-through of what Chicago increases the water is what we're just increasing it right now. When they did a lot of infrastructure improvements and coming from O'Blon to here recently in the past few years, that's why we've seen some increases, because the costs for the repairs or replacements were divvied among the towns based on what they were receiving, only their portion that they were receiving, and so then, of course, we have to make sure that we're able to cover those costs by the residents, all paying their portion. And, and again, like you said, when you have a much more dense population, you're sharing who bring that particular pipe that brings the water to your unit or your home, so of course your water rate is less than when it has to travel, you know, a mile to get to you and there's nobody in between, or, you know, so.
Exactly.
But.
Things that I didn't necessarily think of well before I became an officer either, but when people ask these questions, I always like to draw their attention to how it works.
And one of the other things we do is televise our water systems to look for breaches in the system where we may bleach in water that we're losing and we pay for as the village, you know, because it is lost into the ground. So that is also what we use our water fund to do as well, as well as calculating the charging rate.
So we're going to make a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Millich-Walter?
Yes.
Commissioner Pope?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney.
Yes, motion carries.
Oh, and speaking of water, the AGN Corp. does a yearly inspection of the cathodic protection system that protects the water booster station from effects of electrolysis. This year, they found that the system was not operating properly. This issue could lead to deterioration of the prefab metal station and some of the pipe components that run through the station. Public Works has asked for and received a proposal from AGN to replace the damaged, non-functioning parts of the system. The proposal was in the amount of $16,200, and there is money in the water fund to cover this expense. Does anybody have any questions before I make a motion? I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal from AGN Corp. in the amount of $16,200 to upgrade or repair the cathodic protection system for the water booster station.
Second.
Bring your motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Millich-Walter?
Yes.
Commissioner Pope?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney.
Yes, and motion carries.
And now on to our dump truck. The dump body on our truck number one, which is a 2005 International 7400, has rusted to the point where it needs to be repaired. There is also rust in the cab of the truck that needs work. Public Works asked for and received a proposal from EJ Equipment to make the necessary repairs in the amount of $8,500. There was $8,530 budget for the maintenance of this vehicle for the current budget year, so we fall within that. I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal from EJ Equipment in the amount of $8,500 to repair the rust damage on the 2005 International 7400 truck.
Second.
Bring your motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Millich-Walter?
Yes.
Commissioner Pope?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney.
Yes, and motion carries.
Back to water again. In 2020, the village council approved a proposal from Concentric Integration to replace the ProLogic controllers that operate the water system SCADA, which is the supervisory control in data acquisition. After running the system for the last year, it became apparent that the software used in the controls of the booster station needed to be upgraded to allow better communication between the components and the control of the water flow. The village received a proposal from Concentric to upgrade the controls using the Rockwell RS Logix 500 software. This software allows remote editing and troubleshooting of the ProLogic controllers equipment at the booster station. The cost of this upgrade is $9,190, and there is money in the water fund for this project. And a lot of this remote stuff helps us to identify problems in the moment that they're happening, especially at night when nobody's here, so that we can figure out the best plan of attack and do it as quickly as possible. I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal from Concentric Integration in the amount of $9,190 to upgrade the software used to communicate with and control the water booster station.
Second.
Bring your motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Millich-Walter?
Yes.
Commissioner Pope?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney.
Yes, and motion carries.
And last item on the agenda is regarding the purchase of a new FlexNet vehicle-based station. Public Works would like to purchase a FlexNet vehicle gateway-based station that will allow Public Works personnel to read all water meters in one trip. Currently, the utility staff must make two five-hour trips with two different reading devices. Some people have older water meters, some people have the new ones, and this FlexNet system will read older meters as well as any new devices going forward. We received a proposal from Core and May, who provides the village meters, and the cost of a FlexNet device is $18,000, and there is money in the water fund for this purpose. Does anybody have any questions regarding FlexNet? And I'd like to make the motion to approve the purchase of the new FlexNet-based station from Core and May at the cost of $18,000.
Second.
I hear your motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Millich-Walter?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney.
Yes, and motion carries.
Thank you, and then just a couple announcements. Street resurfacing that we talked about at the last meeting is going to begin September 20th. It will begin on the west side of the village, and we will resurface the streets from west to east. A list of the streets being resurfaced is available on the village website under the Department of Public Works slash Street Resurfacing Project. And the chipper truck, the chipper truck will start on Monday, October 4th, so as there's a few weeks in advance, let you know, those are on the east side of the village that day, Monday, October 4th, and will continue west until all the public streets have been serviced. Do not place your branches out on the street until the weekend before October 4th, so that would be the second and the third. Branches should be placed out by 7:00 a.m., and once the chipper services your street, the chipper will not return until the next chipping date. If you'd like to see a list of all the dates and the regulations, they are on the village website under Department of Public Works, Tree Branch Pickup. And I can reserve talking about one in the park until later if you'd like, and then we can all talk about it.
Sure.
Okay, so that concludes my report.
Thank you. Building and public property, Commissioner Reed?
Detective Mayor Mahoney, with the cooler weather approaching, residents with swimming pools are closing their pools for the season. Doing so is often necessary to drain water from the pool. Please make sure that when you're draining cold water, water is directed onto your property and that the runoff does not drain on your neighbor's property. If you have any questions, please contact the building department at 1-708, excuse me, not 1, we don't have to use 1, but the FCC's changing the rules, so we're going to have to go to 100, so anyway, 708-671-3730. Building permit inspections during the time period of August 18th through September 8th, there were 32 building inspections concluded during this time period. There were also 37 permits that were processed, resulting in $12,596.56 in permanent fees. Mark, do you have anything to add?
No, you're not.
Okay, that concludes our report. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Public health and safety, Commissioner Pope?
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. We'll give you the police activity report from the 8th of August through the 12th of September of the year of 2021, so that's a little over 5, a little under. 4,875 calls for service, again, we're averaging about 1,000 calls a week, wrote 87 adjudication tickets and 21 traffic tickets, so that's up a fair amount. 35 bridge warnings, warnings, 36 verbal warnings, an additional 38 case reports, an additional 29 accident reports, arrested eight adults during that time, no juveniles, impounded five vehicles, did 35 formal senior checks, and an additional 69 citizen assists, so that's what Pales Park Police Department's been up to for the last five weeks or so. Then a couple of really quick announcements. I'd like to remind the drivers in town that we've been trying to be quite vigilant in enforcing all traffic violations, particularly through school zones, particularly vehicles driving past school buses with their warning devices, and the use of wireless communications, that would be your cell phone in a school zone. So again, we'd like to remind you that when you approach or mark a school zone, you should yield to any children or adults that are crossing in the crosswalks, you should stop and wait for a stopped school bus that's loading or unloading, you should reduce your vehicle speed to 20, 2-0, 20 miles an hour. Speeding in a school zone is a $150 fine for the first violation, and a minimum $300 fine for the second or subsequent. Again, transporting children, they should be riding in the back seats, and everybody should have the appropriate seat belt or restraints in place, so our kids have been back at school for a couple of weeks now, and we'd ask that you be as careful about them as you would about any of your own children. about them as you would about any of your own children. And then I have a, a, uh, traffic announcement. On Saturday, September eighteenth, uh, the one hundred twenty-third street of McCarthy Road, depending on where you live, will be closed between Ninety-Sixth Avenue and Eightieth Avenue. For those of you who, uh, don't remember what Ninety-Sixth Avenue is, that would be La Grange. They'll be closed from nine AM to one PM for the Pales Park Autumn in the Park Parade, so please adjust your plans accordingly. Alternative routes for the east-west traffic are eighty-three, uh, eighty-three, one hundred nineteenth, and one hundred thirty-first street. Alternatives towards north and south streets through the village is essentially Eightieth Avenue. So eighty-second, eighty-third, Mohawk, eighty-sixth, eighty-seventh, eighty-eighth, and Ninety-third will be closed at one hundred and twenty-third. Now again, uh, we know that emergencies arise, and sometimes people have to get out, and if you have your identification with you, as long as you're not asking to drive through the parade while it's occurring, uh, we'll be careful and try and let you back in and out of your intersection. You may have to turn a different way than you'd like to be able to turn, but we'll do our best to try and accommodate you. But again, McCarthy will be closed between nine AM and one PM for the Autumn in the Park Parade. Come on, enjoy the parade. It, uh, starts at eleven o'clock, and if you have any questions, you can email me at D Polk, D P O L K, at palespark dot R, or if you'd rather talk to a professional, you can email Chief Miller, J Miller, J M I L L E R, at palespark dot org. Chief Miller, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Nothing, Commissioner.
Thank you for your continued work ethic and hard support, and that concludes my report.
Well, Commissioner Polk, if I may ask a question before you sign off?
Certainly.
I would beseech the office members of the Pales Park Police Department to maybe give some consideration to the traffic patterns in the dells. The last time I checked, the posted speed limit was twenty miles an hour. We have a number of new families that have moved in with small children. Unfortunately, some folks have considered the dells now to be the Indianapolis Speedway. Some signs have been posted indicating that children are outside and that should, traffic should be adjusted accordingly. Uh, I would simply ask that maybe, just maybe, if your folks could look out and make sure that, uh, folks try to obey the speed limit in the dells. Thanks.
No problem, we'll certainly, uh, pay more careful attention to that. There have been issues since eighty-six was closed, now that eighty-six is open, open, some of that we hope will obey, but, uh, we'll pay careful attention to the neighborhood. Thank you, Commissioner Reed. And that still concludes my report.
Excellent. Accounts and finances, uh, you will, uh, address Commissioner Poblatus shortly. Mayor's report, uh, I have one item on my agenda, and that is to approve the liquor license application, license for Woo's House owners, Changy Woo and Christie Tran, and to adopt an ordinance, I'm going to part eight, title two, chapter eight oh eight, section eight oh eight, point two three of the Pales Park Village Code in regard to liquor licenses. Woo's House is located at one two three zero zero South La Grange Road in Pales Park. They are seeking to obtain a liquor license to sell alcohol for, uh, consumption on the premises. This is for a class A license, application is complete with all background checks final letter. Uh, we have a recommended motion, and that is to approve ordinance two thousand one twenty-one twenty-eight, and ordinance, I'm going to part eight, title two, chapter eight oh eight, section eight oh eight, point two three of the Pales Park Village Code in regard to liquor licenses, says Woo's House, one twenty-three zero zero, South La Grange Road.
So move.
Second.
Hear your motion in a second. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Milicewalter?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, motion carries. Uh, and that concludes my report. Clerk Verigoni?
Uh, I have no reports, excuse me.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor's report, Mayor Vane.
I don't have anything formal, but I wouldn't like to make a comment. Uh, it appears that some of our residents are receiving some letters indicating that they are being moved from our MC Squared Electric Aggregation Program to COMED as far as their electrical supply. This is the same program, uh, there's some kind of a, uh, formula that is used between the electrical suppliers, uh, whether they move to a COMED supplied account or stay with MC Squared. Rest assured, this is still all under the village's electric aggregation program. The rate is the same, uh, you can opt out and opt to another supplier at any time without penalty, and this is still a green energy program. But it is somewhat confusing, and we'll try to be a little more clear in getting some information out to the public about why some people may be receiving a letter saying they've been switched back to COMED. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Verigoni. Announcements, uh, the library board will have their regular meeting on Wednesday, September fifteenth, that's this, uh, Wednesday at five PM, in the library. The Pales Plan Nurse Committee will not meet on Thursday, September sixteenth, the next scheduled meeting is Thursday, October twenty-first. The Plan Commission will not meet on Thursday, September sixteenth, as there are no agenda plans, and the Historic Preservation Committee will not meet on September twenty-first, as there are no agenda plans. So, as you, uh, noted, I awkwardly passed over accounts and finances, um, this evening because Commissioner, um, James Poblatus lost his, uh, battle with cancer after a long and brave effort, uh, in the past two weeks. Jim, uh, has been a village, a Pales Park Commissioner since two thousand seven. Jim first served as Commissioner of Building and Public Property, and then for the last few years as Commissioner of Accounts and Finances. Prior to serving at the village council, Jim also served as a member of the village's Plan Commission. When I first ran for mayor in, uh, two thousand seven, uh, it was important to me in, uh, creating a team that the, uh, the members who were mine for election had a love for Pales Park, that they were committed to preserving what makes Pales Park unique, but also recognizing the potential of encouraging growth where we did. I was very fortunate to find Jim. Uh, he absolutely loved our community for all it was and all it could be. Jim was an incredibly talented and creative individual. Not only was he a dental surgeon, but he was also a gifted photographer, artist, and art teacher. He owned his private dental practice in Harold and Evelyn Palace until a few years ago. Jim's experience was in the field of surgical prosthetic implant dentistry, and he was a pioneer in that field. He lectured locally, nationally, and internationally on implant surgery. Jim's artwork has been featured in several McCord Gallery and Cultural Center exhibits, as well as Maureen Valley Community College jury community art shows, and Jim's work, uh, hangs in many private businesses, including a, a very extensive collection in my home, uh, and restaurants, uh, et cetera. A permanent exhibit depicting the historical buildings and some of the most recent scenic locations in the Pales area resides in the Capter Center, and more pieces in the Pales Park Library, and, and in my office, uh, in the mayor's office in the village. Jim was one of the main creators of the, uh, photographic artwork, spirit of Pales Park through the lens of village views itself. That was done, uh, over ten years ago now, maybe fifteen, I'm losing track of time as I get away. Jim's Mo Creek photo has been used for many village publications, uh, throughout the years. It's iconic, um, it, you know, it, it features what I call the Capter Bridge. They call it Mo Creek, but the photo always features the Capter Bridge on, uh, one hundred twenty-first street. Alongside, uh, the, the Mo Creek photo has also been used for many village publications throughout the years, and was featured in the village Beagle sticker in two thousand twenty. Along his, alongside his wife Diana, they raised a son and daughter in Pales Park and were blessed with six grandchildren. Jim was devoted to his family, his profession, the arts, and the community. Jim was able to weave his creative nature into all aspects of his life, a rare magic combination that made him such an asset to our village government. Jim served as my elected colleague in the council of Pales, of Pales Park, more than anything else. Uh, he was an inspiration, mentor, a guy, and he became a very close friend. He served tirelessly and effortlessly, uh, his entire life, and I'm truly grateful for all he has done for our community. I am devastated by his passing, and will miss him dearly, both professionally, as a colleague on this board, and, uh, more than anecdotals personally. Just a side note, uh, although I have had an incredibly difficult time even thinking about this, the village council will appoint someone to fill, uh, the vacancies created by Jim's passing. This appointing will serve the remainder of the unexpired term through, uh, May two thousand twenty-three. I, I really could talk about him all evening. I consider him to be, uh, a Renaissance man. Uh, I've described him to various people who don't know, and they say, oh, he was a Renaissance man, and I said, you're exactly right, that's the description. He was an artist, uh, in, in the later years, he's got six grandchildren. He would spend his, uh, a lot of his mornings with his grandchildren, teaching him how to paint, photography. He was an incredible guy, and I'm really gonna miss him. Oh, I do have a few more announcements. Earlier this evening, we presented a proclamation naming September two thousand twenty-one as ovarian cancer awareness month. To promote how important awareness and early detection are, the National Ovarian Cancer Coalition places teal-colored ribbons in our community until October first. Thank you to this organization for their efforts to educate the public on this disease. Finally, our nine eleven remembrance announcement. Saturday marked the twentieth anniversary of the September eleventh attacks. This is the deadliest terror attack on U.S. soil. Over two thousand two hundred ninety-six perished that day, and countless others suffered health problems relating to these events. This evil act was followed by unprecedented acts of compassion, charity, and resilience. Let us have a moment of silence to remember all those who lost their lives that day, and the many who continue to struggle and grieve in the aftermath. Just, just a comment, I mean, uh, I was away so a weekend visiting my son, uh, down in Bloomington, Indiana, for, uh, his fraternity father's weekend, so I did not, uh, read a lot about what was happening in that alone. I did, however, read, uh, uh, an editorial in the Tribune by a filmmaker, uh, who was on the set, he was on a train as it was approaching the World Trade Center. It got stopped, he was right there, um, and his recounting of the event took me back to that feeling I had on that day, which I know all of you, uh, share, um, and, uh, it was extremely powerful. So it's important that we don't forget that about citizens and visitors coming through. Anyone in the audience like to address the council at this time?
I would. I'd like to talk about Autumn in the Park.
I almost forgot about that. Let's bring some joy into this meeting.
Let's, let's live out with something that's worth looking forward to, and, um, Autumn in the Park this weekend, Friday and Saturday night. Uh, Friday night, the grounds open at six PM, and we will have food, vendors, beer, wine, and spirits. There's, uh, a sports pub, which is basically, we'll have TV sets set up so you can watch, uh, football games, and, uh, Lubidopunk Circus will go on at seven PM until ten thirty, and the grounds close at eleven. If you haven't seen Lubidopunk Circus, they're a very, very fun band. And then on Saturday is the parade that Commissioner Polk mentioned, the road will be closed, uh, McCarthy will be closed from nine AM to, uh, one PM. The parade starts at eleven o'clock, come out, stand alongside McCarthy Road, wave to people, catch some candy, have some fun. Grounds open at eleven. Again, beer, wine, food, and spirits, uh, we will have the football games going on on the TVs, we have artists and vendors, uh, and with demonstrations and selling things. We will have a top town for kids five years and younger, but that's something that parents would have to do with their child. Um, we'll have a stage door dance performing under the tent at one o'clock, Tulow Fitness doing a demo after that under the tent. And then at three o'clock, Big Dog Mercer will go on for some fun under the tent, some great music, and then the public tasting of our barbecue rib competition starts at four thirty-five PM. Now, suggestion, get there early and get your, uh, tokens for the rib tasting, because they do run out, there are a limited number of coins for purchase, and each coin allows you a rib to taste. Um, and then at seven thirty PM, Mike and Joe One, they are super fun band, they've been here before, and the grounds will close at eleven PM. And, uh, thank you to all the staff and everyone jumping in and doing their part, so please come out and have some fun.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very excited this year for a number of reasons. Uh, the first is, we didn't have this event last year, so I'm excited to see everyone, both on the parade. Get the move!
Hey, Commissioner, one second.
Yeah, the clock's up, Saturday.
Don't worry.
Someday they'll perfect this technology.
Yes, uh, so I, I was just saying that there's two reasons that I'm excited about. First, uh, is that we haven't had it in, in a year now, uh, we missed last year. The, the second is, for the first time in like, I don't know how long we've been doing this, I have been elevated to be able to serve beer, the beer tent from five thirty to seven thirty on Friday night, so I hope that every boy comes and gets a beer and says, "Hello." So I'm, I'm very excited about that opportunity. Commissioner Polk, Commissioner Reed, anything?
No, thank you.
Well, I'll be there, I'll be in the parade, and, uh, I'll be emceeing throughout the both of the days, so, uh, come on out, because, I mean, there is absolutely nothing you could be doing that's gonna be better than Autumn in the Park, to rest my case.
Exactly.
Well said. So, uh, you did, okay. Did anyone else from the audience like to address the council?
Great, just say hello, we've missed you.
We have to recognize, it's been so long, we're so happy to hear, so great to see, we're so great to see at least part of your face.
I know.
So I know there's a smile there, so, uh, that makes a difference for me. So, uh, no, no further requests, I would seek a motion to adjourn the meeting at this time.
So move.
Second.
Hear your motion in a second. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Milicewalter?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Yes, uh, and motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, and good evening all, and we'll see you, uh, Friday and Saturday.